This is a refresher. What we were engaged to do as your CPA firm is to ultimately render an opinion on these financial statements at the end of our audit. However, there are a few other things that we're doing concurrently with that. Because we're operating with taxpayer funds here, we are under a set of standards called Government Audit Standards. It's put up by the federal government and they take everything that regular industry has us do and labels a bunch of other requirements on top as well. So, in particular, there's a greater level of transparency as far as what's being looked at, some of the significant pieces like significant laws and regulations that might affect these financials, the different components of your tax rate come to mind off the bat. The other thing is that since we're dealing with taxpayer funds, we would be, they require us as the auditor to disclose to you as the city council and your government's role a laundry list of various things that we might have come across. But spoiler alert, we did not come across any of those things. And so if you were to read this letter all the way through, it will read very, very similarly to last year. So as far as our audit goes, there were, there was no reportable significant non-compliance, there were no reportable material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. So pretty much as good as it gets on that front. However, there's one thing I'd like to point out. The standards setters like to move the target for us a little bit every year. So there is some new verbiage in this letter. There's one in particular that they made a stick in that has gotten a lot of questions this year, so I wanted to point it out. So on this letter, on page two, about midway down, it mentions significant risks that were identified in our audit. And we get this question a lot. Management override of controls is a fraud risk. And everybody, the red flags kind of start going up like, hey, what's going on here? I can say, these significant risks are kind of a sight unseen before we ever start the audit kind of thing. First of all, I'd emphasize that there were no reportable findings, no significant issues. This is something we were now required, starting this year, to disclose to you some of those, what keeps the auditor up at night risks. And management override of internal controls is actually one that the government tells us, has to keep us up at night, whether we think it should or shouldn't. So that if you were to go look at the city of Dallas's audit, Amazon Incorporated, Walmart, every single one of their auditors is also assessing management override as a pervasive threat to the financial statements. Because ultimately, it's something that's kind of difficult to design controls for if someone just overrides the processes that are in place. So that was a significant risk that we go into every audit assuming it could potentially be a big problem. But again, nothing to report on that front. And I won't go into the rest of the letter unless y'all like to go to bed early tonight. You can take it home. And if you have any insomnia, it's already been agreed. You'll be out in 10 minutes. So, what about the audit? If you will jump with me in your annual financial report, you should all have a copy of, I figured we would start at the most natural place to begin, which is the beginning, page one, which is the independent auditor's report. And just like they changed the wording in the other letter, they changed this one up. In fact, they completely stole all of my thunder. They put our opinion right up at the top. There's no more drum roll. You got a clean opinion on the financial statements. We were able to render at the end of our audit what's known as an unmodified opinion. It's known as a clean opinion colloquially. And of the four conclusions we could reach at the end of your audit, that is the best one. And it means that based on our audit, based on all of the procedures that we did, we do believe that these financial statements sitting in front of you are materially correct and that there's nothing that is inaccurate or omitted that takes them out of compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. So as far as the audit goes, clean opinion, no findings, that's pretty much as good as it gets. Before I go any further, I would like to sidebar and thank Tricia and her staff for making it another great audit year. I'm here to tell you from the last time I was standing in front of you a year ago, accounting has not gotten any easier. They keep throwing new standards at us and big pots of federal money that they give to you and expect you to figure out what to do with it later. But as always, Tricia and everyone at the city that we've worked with has been extremely helpful, forthcoming, and has been just really cooperative to get us here in front of you in a timely manner every year. So clean opinion and not by accident. So, I figure in the interest of not scaring all these people off, I probably would not go through every page, express our appreciation to you that way. But I did want to go through a couple of highlights that you might be interested in, in the financial statements. And of course, if there's anything in any of your review that any of you had seen that you'd like to discuss, we can definitely go over those as well. If you'll jump with me to pages 10 and 11. So these financial statements, it's a lot to digest, but one of the takeaways that we always like to emphasize is that there's nothing in here really that we would consider professionally to be a surprise, or that would be something that would be unexpected for you as the council. One of the things that probably is the most different from the information you're seeing throughout the year is this statement and the statement that follows it. The very first two financial statements that we put out are what we call the government-wide statements. And that's the one place where you will see a balance sheet and an income statement that is all of the city's funds lumped together for the entire year. And the other thing that they have us do is that we include a lot of the long-term items, fixed assets, the TMRS and the TESRS pension liabilities, long-term debt, all of that gets reflected here. And if you were to look at differences from when we started the audit to where we landed at now, really, the adjustments are almost entirely related to things that, as a matter of practice, only get adjusted once a year. So that if you looked at this statement, most of any changes that happened during our audit were updating, helping update a lot of these once-a-year numbers to what they needed to be. But ultimately, everything that you have all been seeing as far as fund balances, cash reserves, there's no surprises there. There were no really big changes and nothing that, anything that looked like, oh, we were doing good and now we're not doing good, not the case at all. Drive that point home. One other thing I'd like to point out, if you will jump with me Page 47, I think, is cool. It was cool as a financial statement can probably be. This is a budget actual statement for the general fund. And what this does, I think, really is that it can show, it shows how the general fund shook out at the end of the year after the audit was complete against the budget numbers that you guys have been looking at throughout the year. As you can see, revenue was just a little bit over budget. Expenditures came in under budget. And ultimately, the final budget, the city expected to add about 100 grand to fund balance. And a little bit further down, page 47, you can see that y'all actually added, after everything was said and done, added a little over 300,000 to fund balance. Reserves are doing good. In fact, y'all are getting on toward a year in the general fund. Although, it's not just you guys, for a lot of governments were adding the, not an asterisk, but just a reminder that with a lot of the COVID funding that has come in and the opportunities that have been there to get reimbursed by the federal government for stuff you were going to spend money on anyway, it definitely winds up adding to those unrestricted reserves. But the, in, for all of you guys deciding how to spend that, that's kind of a one-time thing, that it's not like, oh, our reserves are this big. They've gotten bigger and they're going to continue going in that trajectory. Barring another pandemic and multi-trillion-dollar recovery plan, a lot of those ARPA funds and the associated bump with it is something that probably is just going to happen once. But again, it's not a bad thing. It definitely gives everyone at the city a chance to see what priorities are going into the future for what needs to be done with those reserves. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have had about the financials. I know it's a pretty dry read, but again, I'd say the takeaway is everything was good and as expected.
Any questions?
I had a question, just real quick, and maybe it'd be Tricia. On page 47, the one that you said is a cool slide on your budget actuals. The investment earnings, you know, we budgeted 1,200, but our actuals were 14, so we had a variance of about 13 grand, like almost 1,100% increase. And on the next page, it has the average rate of return for your investments was 6.75%. I'm just kind of curious to know what we're investing in that's yielding an 1,100% rate of return. We need to sink a lot of money into that.
Well, when I budget it, I budget next to nothing for earnings, just because especially the last few years, they've been all over the place. Last year, before last, they got down to where we were getting hardening. The majority of our money that's invested is in pools with the state, Tech Pool, Tech Star, Logic. And we had our bond fund money in there, which now is depleted. But, so, we got, it jumped up about a year ago. It went from a few hundred in a month to a few thousand.
And that was not just you guys. That was, depending on what your cash position did.
I was just curious, because I mean, that's a one heck of a rate of return.
Yeah, and I think if you look, the general fund has about 2.6 million of cash in there. I guarantee you, Tricia would love to get 6.5%. That TMRS number is because that's actually by statute, they have to give retirees that rate of return whether they get it or not. As far as the budgetary process, you can certainly go back before you amend the budget the final time and shoot the arrow into the tree and paint a target around it, so to speak. But the interest rates are going all over the place and it's sometimes a little tricky to know exactly what they're going to do.
And when I, my philosophy when I budget is to base the revenue on projections, but be conservative, because you never know. But we need to have an idea of where we can go with the expenditures, but with investment especially, I keep it.
I'd say we're about 30 minutes from finding out where that's going to go.
I guess the revenue I use more as a guideline, whereas the expenditures are budget.
In fact, I just flipped over on page seven. You can see there's some comparative information in there. And for the city as a total, it went from 8,800 to 47,000, which is still a pretty large jump. A lot of that jump was just because of the increase in the bond funds, like Tricia said. But seeing interest rates double or triple has not been uncommon over the last few months of us doing 20, getting into 22 audits.
And when we sold the last bond issuance in '21, that money went in, kind of, you know, that was a couple of million.
And then, just had one other question on the government accounting standards board on page four of the main thing, the new standards. Statement number 96, subscription-based information technology arrangements. I guess that's the new, you're saying that's a new GASB. I just was kind of curious to know how many subscription-based technology arrangements we have. I know maybe like our accounting software.
And Adobe.
Yeah, all of that.
Unicod, the, Unicod, the.
And how we can.
Utility billing, or not billing.
Just how we can, like, the AT&amp;T thing that we had, how that was a technology-based thing that we were paying for so long and how we can help circumvent that in the future so we're not.
I mean, these are totally different, but with, with the budget last year, we bought a subscription to debt book, which would be another one. And I have a training this week on going further with it, with the GASB 96 things. That'll, that'll help us track it as well.
The lease standard was this year. Richwood didn't have anything significant that fell under that particular umbrella. But when the GASB wrote that standard, they said, no, carve software out, we'll consider that later. And then they came back and said, okay, yeah, do the same stuff with the lease standard, but with software. The challenge is going to be probably instead of having two or three contracts to look at and that none of them are really significant, you're going to have probably 20 things to look at and none of them may be significant. So it's going to be a little bit of a challenge for accounting staff, but I would not, I'd be really surprised if there was anything huge that came out of that for you guys.
Any other questions?
I think I've asked it years past, and I know you're on audit to it, and I know you've said Tricia did a great job, and no doubt about that, but any OFIs that are not on the compliance, they're far from compliance, but, you know, learnings from other cities or anything that, nothing else we can take?
I think really the big thing that we've talked about, like with Tricia during the audit, is the, one of the places, if we're talking kind of off the armchair, where can things start going sideways, it's in grant compliance. I know you guys are participating in two different block grants, one's through Brazoria County and then one is through the general land office. Is that right? Or is it Department of Ag? And some of those, plus the American Rescue Plan Funds, that stuff's not simple to comply with. And so it's something that even though the accounting for it's easy, we definitely have had some discussions about that this is something to stay on top of because it can definitely.
And that's one reason we use grant work. We hire grant managers for that exactly.
Manager. Appreciate that.
It's a lot.
And I, I have to say, working with PBH, it's easier to say than working with them. They're great. If I have a question any time of the year, I can call them or email and they get right back to me. Or if something comes up that I've never dealt with before, okay, how should I handle this? Great. So, they keep us.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, Clayton.
Okay. Let's see. Adam Pete. Hey. Discuss and consider appointment for Brazisport Water Authority representative. And we have two folks signed up, Lauren LeCoutte and William Do we have any discussion from the council members?
Either one, I mean.
Take it.
Take a pick. Who wants to do it?
What is the term on that? Is that?
That'd be.
A year?
One year, two year?
They usually let me know when I need to appoint somebody else. I'm not sure when his terms expire.
It's a two-year term.
Two-year. I think it was two.
That's a two-year term.
But it'll probably just fill Jeremy's unexpired term.
So when is yours, when was yours supposed to lapse?
I'd have to go look it up with, they always kept track of it.
They let me know when I need to appoint.
This year?
Yeah.
And we're just calling them again.
Yeah. I know that Lauren has served on the council before. She's good, she's dealt with the budgets and.
I just want to make sure the point is know, like, what they're committing, how long it's for, or what the term is beforehand.
Well, I know that she's talked to, she's talked to me about it a couple of times and asked me for, I gave her some of the information that I had from my time that was on there, when I was on there. And, and again, it's a two-year term. It's pretty much what they're doing is representing the city of Richwood, who's one-seventh the owner of BWA. There's some folks that say that BWA operates independent. The operation is part of the, the board of directors are there to provide oversight based on member cities' concerns. And it's pretty much like the council. And, but they do, every year, they're, they're actually charged with having to provide a budget before the cities do. So the cities can see what, what they're going to have to have for theirs. So usually, the BWA's budget is, is set out, or is approved in the, in July. So they start working, they should be working right about now or maybe in, in March. But they have a similar, similar procedures as we do about checking the budget, going through, and looking at the future plans, construction, or any capital projects. And also, there are five-year plans.
Looks like it'd be July 24.
Yeah.
So it's 2022, 2022 to 2024.
Because Jeremy served my unfinished term and then was re. But it is an important position. It is someone that you really need to, it's something that by the, by the end, by the end of it, you're going to understand kind of how the water flows down here and some of the limitations that we have on the river. And some of the issues that we have, that they have treating the water that comes in for the river, from the river. And depending, you know, some folks, you may be getting a couple phone calls wanting to know why BWA has messed up this water in this town, or why, why this water's this way. And unfortunately, BWA sends it directly into the tanks, our tanks, and then our tanks distribute it. So any water that's distributed out of the tanks, it's a blend of BWA and city water. But.
Well, except for like, what, Brazoria and?
Yeah, except for Brazoria and Freeport. They're the only two cities that have.
100%.
100% of BWA.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just talking to Lauren. She asked if you'll table this till the end because she's on her way.
Oh. Does the council have any, any objections to that?
Make a motion and we postpone item A to the end of action items, or discussion and action items.
Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Yarborough. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nope. Can we, I will withdraw my motion.
Nope.
Sorry, Mike.
Okay.
I think she wanted to hear what you had to say.
Okay. Well, basically, again, what I, what I just said was, and I think I've told her this, is BWA is owned by member cities, or what they call member cities. Each city owns one part of that, that system. That's why they have boards of directors. The cities have a specific rate because they are part-owned. And then they also, BWA also has customers such as some of the, one of the chemical companies in the area, and the TDCJ, and Rosenberg right now, that, that buy water at a, at a higher rate. The, what they do is they provide the water to, to assist the cities or to help the cities make it through because primarily, the, the cities are having, like, we are, having problems with their wells. It helps take the load off the wells. And this was a regional-type setup that was brought together back in the late 80s and voted on by the communities. Two communities voted out of it. And so, instead of having nine communities that were member cities, you only have seven now. Again, you have budget responsibilities. You will, there'll be things that the BWA representative will be voting on as far as water issues, whether or not to buy extra water from the Brazos River Authority when, when we're really, really low on the river, on the Brazos River. Luckily, in the last 10 years, we've actually, or they've actually been able to save up some money and have a contingency fund for that. So, it's just like to see you have problems with maintenance and equipment failures. Plus, they're going through a major expansion. Yes, ma'am? Yes, Lauren?
I would like to withdraw my application.
You'd like to withdraw your application?
I would. Let's make this a lot easier.
Okay.
Yeah. And if it goes unfilled, if someone gets elected council, for example, then I'll just fill it in.
Okay.
Make it simple on y'all.
All right. Okay. Will, do you have any questions?
No sir.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Still need action.
Yeah. Any other discussion, questions?
Make a motion to appoint William Yerson, Brazisport Water Authority representative for Richwood, City of Richwood.
Okay, I have, I have a motion made by Councilmember Fountain. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote, sir? Councilmember Strawn, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fountain?
Aye.
Okay. Let the record reflect that the motion carries. Will? You want to talk to Jeremy or myself, just?
I'll come to kill a brain if you don't mind.
Okay. I don't have much of a brain. I'm getting all of these hits.
Hold on a minute.
But yes, you're really waiting anytime. Okay, moving along. Discuss, overview discussion regarding transportation fund and bond fund.
All right. Well, Mayor and Council, I wanted to go over some, some issues about our transportation fund in preparation for what Cliff's going to talk to you about. Several years ago, before I started with the city, the transportation fund was created to isolate and accumulate the sales tax of a quarter percent that is allocated to streets and then also the transportation fee, which is $5 on every utility bill. So that, those two categories of money are put into there. The sales tax can only be spent on streets. Transportation fund can be spent on any of the three categories of streets, sidewalks, or drainage. And look, I was doing a lot of looking through, and we have spent more out of the transportation fund on streets than what we have collected that would be only for streets. So therefore, the balance remaining can be spent on any of the three Right now, as we sit here today, with what our end of the year for fiscal '22 fund balance was, plus everything we've collected and everything we've spent going in and out of that fund, our balance is at 1,000, 1,5,747. A few years ago, it was less than 400,000. So we've, we've accumulated quite a bit. Staff's intention was to get it to a point where it could have an impact, instead of just spending it on small things. We do do, you know, street maintenance, seal cracking and, or.
Crack sealing.
Crack sealing. Seal cracking, yeah.
That happens too.
The seals crack, so then we see, anyway, you know, those type of things. The day-to-day M&amp;R, we do out of that fund. But it doesn't come anywhere close to what we collect on an annual basis. In fact, about 25,000 of revenue comes into that fund every month, give or take. Especially, sales tax can vary. And so that leaves about a $20,000 net increase every month. So, we're coming to the end of our, our bond fund projects with the street, sidewalks, and drainage. And there's amounts left within the fund for each of those three categories that by voter approval, those three, those three remaining amounts have to be used for the category they were assigned to. At budget time, I'd estimated 450,000 from the streets going into the transportation fund, and we were going to do a $750,000 project to finish Oakwood Shores. and we were going to do a $750,000 project to finish Oakwood Shores. When it was all said and done, we had $245,000. There was an invoice that came in that I hadn't... I had missed. So originally, we had said that $450,000 would come from the bond fund for the Oakwood Shores, and then we would take $300,000 out of fund balance in the transportation fund to finish Oakwood Shores. That $300,000 is actually $579,000. Just... Actually, it's 75 less than that. It's $504,000. So I stand corrected on that because we made an adjustment and I didn't adjust that figure. So that money is already budgeted. That's already, you know, been decided we would do that. And I think everybody agrees we need to finish Oakwood Shores. The amount remaining for the sidewalks is $76,670. We have some project, a project that Cliff's going to talk to you about, that we built in a contingency of 10% that comes to $402,055. So that leaves an amount needing to come out of fund balance of $325,385. Then on drainage, we have $131,015. The project that Cliff has recommended comes to $424,411, including that 10% contingency, leaving a shortfall that we would need to take out of fund balance of $293,396. We also accumulated $76,672 of interest in the bond fund when we sold the bonds, since we sold them to now. So that will be added in. That is not allocated to any one particular category. That can be used on any. And then originally, when we did the budget, we said we were going to do a street repair this year coming out of general fund. And that's what the box to the side is, the $575,000. If we don't do that repair, which is still, we said we'd do it at the end of the year, this shortfall of about $50,000 could come out of that. But that, if you take out all those red numbers and add in the interest, we need to put about $50,000 of fund balance in, and we would come down to just under $10,000 fund balance as of today in transportation. I do want to stress, that's why we have this fund, to do the projects that need to be done. And those three amounts coming out of the bond fund have to be spent on that. They can't just flow into general fund for whatever. And that fund balance includes the contingency of about $75,000, which may or may not change that need for the fund balance.
Sorry to interrupt. Just the blue, $245,76 and $131, those are the only ones that are, have to stay to those specifics, correct?
Yes. But on their own, they really aren't adequate to do anything.
Correct.
So if we end up doing all this, as we sit today, we would end up with about $9,300 of fund balance. But as I said earlier, it's going to increase about $20,000 every month, 20 to 25. We have intentionally stockpiled, stockpile's not the right word, accumulated this money for use when the bond project was done, for where we saw the need. And Cliff has been really diligent at really looking into where the need is and where the money could be spent. So I just wanted to present that to you. I think I gave you each one of these sheets. And behind is my summary of the streets bond project, the fund. In this, you have a summary of every dime that went in or out. Well, I shouldn't say dime because I have them rounded to the dollar. But we have one invoice left on drainage to spend and one on sidewalk to spend, but those are figured in. But this gives you every invoice we've received, so you can see where the money came from and where it went.
You mentioned $75,000 for the transportation fund in the red, right? It was, it went down by $75,000?
Yes.
Did you count that into the $50,000 needed?
I did. That's the only number I didn't change. And I just now caught it. So, yes. So, because that 50 had been 125. So...
So it is 50?
Yes, yes. So I apologize for that.
Oh, no, no, I just mentioned.
You know, you look at something, you look at something, and then when you get up in front of people to show it...
Or you change it, and then it doesn't save, and then you print it, and you don't realize it yet.
So anyway, I'm going to, you know, Cliff is now going to present what he has brought to us for the projects. But I just wanted to show you where the money's going to come from. You know, we don't want to sit on the funds just to have them. We need to spend them occasionally. So, anyway, that's it. Any questions for me?
Is 10% contingency enough? Meaning, we had contingency on one of our projects, and we ran into some technology issues where we had to upgrade stuff. I'm not saying there's technology in sidewalks, but there are lights and signals and things like this. So is 10% contingency enough?
We truly don't know, but based on the project and size and scale, we feel it will be. It's not a huge project. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
On both of them, actually.
Cliff, what was engineered in the original, in the original quote for...
Sidewalks?
Yeah. For contingency in the original amount. 10%?
In any cost opinion, y'all generally use 15 or 15...
So it's 15% in the original plus this 10%?
Built into theirs.
Built into theirs, yes.
And then 10% of our own contingency.
If that makes sense.
And I believe, if I'm correct, these were the things that were already engineered when the bond project started?
They were, they were. And if I can jump in, Eric might not be exactly accurate because these are based on just bid numbers. So we had cost opinions for sidewalks and for drainage, but these are actual numbers coming in to do the actual work.
How old are the bids?
Well, we just got them.
Oh, you just got them? So material prices are not three years old?
As long as, if you guys accept, they are, the contract prices are settled, so. Barring any change orders and hence the contingencies.
Do those bids have contingencies in them, saying if their price increases X amount?
No, the bids probably won't. But what Eric is saying is when they originally presented the cost opinion, they did have contingency. But when we get down to the numbers, after the bid's submitted, that is what it is.
How does this put us if, you know, I mean, we do these projects and you're pretty much eating all of a, eating up all of the '22 budget? And I know, like you said, you're still making money every month. If something unforeseen was to happen...
So the transportation fund is actually kind of, I guess the word would be a subset of the general fund. It used to all be accounted for within the general fund. Our general fund is very healthy. They recommend us having six months of expenses as a reserve. We're above that, and we will still be above that with these. So say we never took in another dime for transportation fund. The general fund is still responsible for street, sidewalk, and drainage. It's just the decision was made to set up a separate fund, to just keep those. And once money goes into that fund, it is restricted. We can't take it out and put it back in the general.
And I understand you're asking, you know, it's a low, it's a low balance. If something were to come up.
Right.
Historically, it's important to say that we've had to use a lot of this money over the years towards Oakwood Shore's roads because they systematically failed. That's no longer a problem because they're being replaced. And they're being replaced to a standard which I think we have some faith in.
Right.
So the money that we do spend, mostly out of street, sidewalks, and drainage, have to do with patching items, rock, some asphalt patching, stuff like that. It's fairly nominal. We don't have those serious road construction initiatives that we're having to face in the bond fund. And with the account, sorry, the fund, continually or continuously regenerating, I would feel fine about it. I know it looks low, it looks scary, but it is continuously growing.
We have, you know, the healthy general fund fund balance that we could always dip into if we needed to for something. Plus, we have a contingency fund that we have been putting over $200,000 in for the last three years. So that's the least possible.
Ultimately, the decision was made to do it like this. Council, is all of these tie together? And it's the continuity of the plan. The drainage continues with our drainage master plan. The street continues the master plan. Sidewalk continues the master plan. These are plug-and-play continuations. These aren't branching out into something new. And I think Cliff was probably going to hit on that. I just stole your thunder, didn't I?
You still did.
So again, you know, in building upon these, one of the oversight, the short side that we saw last time was in one of the drainage plans, we re-engineered it, or actually, we didn't, they did. They re-engineered it and found a better way to do it. So this is a continuation of that that ties into our west drainage. Yeah.
Yeah.
And it continues on and so forth. So it's, that's why we're approaching it in this manner.
Do we have a backup plan if we decided not to do sidewalks? Can you spend that 76?
Yeah, that's where it gets, and hopefully I touched a little bit more on that, where it gets complicated.
Okay. They're all blurred.
Yeah, it's... It's complicated things for me, but this was just to discuss Trish's overview. But once we get into each item, these questions can be asked and answered. Sorry.
Thank you, Trish.
A law, I'm sorry.
You're doing amazing though.
You just ate them fun.
I have to be the fun sucker.
Okay, well, let's move on to item C. Discuss and consider awarding bids for Ridgewood's 2022 sidewalk and drainage construction contract.
And Council, so based on these numbers, I promise you, I didn't stay up at night dreaming of the most expensive projects. As Eric said, there's continuity and efficiency here, and it's sidewalks were a plan that stayed on what was originally talked about. Continuity, really where we can connect the Creek Bend subdivision to the new sidewalks, Oyster Creek Drive and South Yopon. And as far as efficiency goes, we had the Moore Street extension already, the design services already performed for that. We just couldn't afford to do it at the time with the bond money we had. We did not think we could, and we couldn't afford it 100%. So we pulled that off to bring it back to you now to ask if we can proceed with that. The Moore Street extension, I think they did 100, about 150 feet back in 2012, and it's sat there ever since. And it's because of its drainage work. It is expensive. It's a lot more expensive than just concrete on top of the ground. But it is what we're asking you guys to approve. So we had the bid opening in January. HDI Construction was the apparent low bidder at $365,555. We have worked with HDI in the past. They have a good reputation, a good history with us. And at this point in time, using, as Trish has laid it out, we ask you to approve or recommend that you make a motion awarding the 2022 sidewalks drainage construction contract to HDI.
And that's coming from Moore Street to North Mayhem?
Moore Street to West Mayhem.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it starts at North Mayhem. There's a gap. There is a gap, yes. And we did additional sidewalk construction with the street projects, anticipating this, if not now, at some point in the future. So we're trying to work towards the goal of finishing the sidewalk.
So it's listed as 2022 sidewalks and drainage construction contract?
Yes.
And it's from 2022?
Yeah, it's just because when...
We want to execute it now in 2023?
Correct. It's the title of the project because we still are in...
Okay.
In 2022. Right.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that...
It wasn't a typo.
It's not a typo.
No, no.
So it's a project that we didn't complete in 2022, for whatever reason. And now we want to go ahead and take that project and put it in 2023.
Yes.
The bid process began last year, like the whole project process.
And do we have an amount for that? Did we already, did we already approve the amount?
That's this number here at my...
Okay.
We have the bid, the base bid was $365,555. We're asking for $402,555. That's with the 10% contingency added in.
The $36,500 added in the box.
Yeah, number one on the bid received.
Okay.
I had fun drawing boxes.
Pretty close on the bid, yeah.
We had a lot of bids. It was kind of crazy for a sidewalk project at that size, it's kind of small, but there were a lot of participation.
So Cliff, do you feel you could, I mean, we have more of a sidewalk concern than a drainage concern?
I think when I, when I think about what I've heard, drainage is where we could use more help. And I'm wondering if we left that 402 and moved it, even if we don't have the project lined up right now, if down the road, that's not better spent on drainage for the city? Well, that, that could be one way. You decide that council decides to go. I guess we need to spend the bond funds in sidewalks. Yes. We need to spend that there. We don't get very far with the 76, 6.
Right.
So we can't really design or engineer anything else because we don't have, there's not enough funds there to cover.
Sidewalk repair and...
Any degree of construction. I think as of right now, in my opinion, if all goes the way that I want it, the drainage project will almost be complete as it was bid. And we will also get the continuity of sidewalks and finishing off something that needs to be finished off for a decade. I think this has come to a point to where we need a means to an end. I'm not going to say that drainage is less important than sidewalks. I'm going to say that we have some money, and I'd like to commit it in this area for continuity purposes and get something finished. And in the future, we have a whole lot more we can do.
Good.
In drainage, and we'll have more money there, too.
Good. Bruce, sir?
This is a comment item?
You can.
Okay. My comment is that for many, many, many years, we allotted money in our budget for sidewalks. We told the residents we were going to build sidewalks. We did not because we were broke, and we used that money for other things in our budget because we needed it elsewhere that was so much more important than sidewalks. Quote-quote, "so much more important." We put it on the bond. The residents approved sidewalks. Yes, they'll want drainage, but drainage tying into sidewalks. And I don't know if we still qualify for the grants that we were using to do sidewalks. But at one point, all that the sidewalks in our town were getting was some grant money thrown at them here and there, which is why we have the hodgepodge of sidewalks that we have now. So a continuation to make them usable, in my opinion, is something that the residents do want, especially the ones that live in those neighborhoods and have been waiting for them for a very long time. That's just my opinion, and I heard about it when I was on council. And we said we would do it, and the money was never there. Now the money is there, and so that's just my public comment on it.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
If I understand this correctly, you're talking about completing the sidewalk from West Mayhem down Moore Street to North Mayhem, correct? That section that's right there?
Yes, sir.
So just as a resident, just my opinion, my feeling on it is, I agree completely because where I live out of Roanoke, Briar Creek, we have a lot of flooding and everything over there. Drainage is a big issue. But as a resident, as a parent, my kids don't walk to school, I drive them. But I drive down Moore Street every day. The way we have to come out of our house and come around because of the way the school is, we drive down that strip, and there are kids that ride bikes, walk, and everything else. And they don't want to walk in people's yards or in ditches. And a lot of times, that road in the mornings, you're either dodging school buses or kids. And in this specific scenario, you know, if it was something completely different, I would agree, maybe you'll put it into the drainage. But just because of that specific section of the sidewalk and traveling that road five days a week every morning, I, me personally as a resident, I would agree that completing that sidewalk would be vital because of the amount of kids that travel on bikes, bike foot, and everything else. because of the amount of kids that travel on bikes, by foot, and everything else in the mornings and afternoons.
Especially those people who have to go down that road. And that's a problem.
That's heavily traveled, very heavily traveled.
Well, in, in all essence, what, what they're trying to do here is actually try to be, be the best, do the best that they could do with what they've got and make sure that they, we chip away a little bit at more than just one project.
And our goal has always been safe pass to school.
Right.
Transportation alternatives. That's how we've always kind of sold it. And I think that this, this initiative sticks with that.
That is brilliant. It's a great idea.
This press includes also, I guess, repairing the driveways. I know there was an issue a while back, or maybe I'm wrong, about that whole driveway stuff.
It includes, it includes driveway work that, that needs to be done to accommodate incoming sidewalk. Drain boxes, grading, everything. And if council, if council awards, would ask that, understand that we're awarding 402,555, or if y'all would please state an amount, if y'all would like to do that, that'd be fine, too. I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, any other questions or discussion? Do we have any motions?
I'll make the motion to, where's the name of the?
Right here, HDI Construction.
HDI Construction.
Make the motion to award the contract to HDI Construction in the amount of 402, 402,055 dollars for the completion of the sidewalks and drainage from West Mayhem to North Mayhem on Moore Street.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Fountain. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Councilmember Strong. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect that the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving right along. Discuss and consider approving Resolution 23R-75, amending the fiscal year 23 Transportation Fund Budget to complete a sidewalk project using remaining bond funds and transportation fund balance.
Y'all approved the contract? Now, we need to earn the money. So, this is just moving the money into that fund for this project.
So, do we have any discussion, or do we have motions? We watch how we state this to make sure the remaining bond funds and transportation fund is, the transportation fund is explicit.
It's, um, let me show you. It's explicit in that resolution.
Or the resolution?
The resolution is specific to that amount.
Where it is up to.
My computer died, so. No, I'm not, I just.
Okay, let's see.
It's brought up on my phone.
Yeah, the resolution has been exacted.
23R-75.
Okay. I was looking on the short agenda.
I believe I worded it to an amount not to exceed.
402.
There it is, okay.
Yes, so C not to exceed.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 23-R-75, amending the fiscal year 23 Transportation Fund Budget to complete a sidewalk project using the remaining bond funds and transportation fund balance.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Johnson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Councilmember Strong. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries. Okay. Item E, discuss regarding, discussion regarding Stormwater Master Plan Phases One and Two.
And council, all this is, is while Jared Engelke was down here to assist in answering questions about the proposed projects this evening, I asked for him to go over with council kind of a start to finish with the Stormwater Master Plan Phase One and Two projects from an engineering perspective. I'm more interested in hearing him talk to me, so I'll let him do that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I was here just about a, a little over a year ago discussing this exact project. If you recall at the time, it was awarded. And subsequently, with the award, it was also a change order reducing the project scope by about 432,000. And that was because the funds were not, didn't have drainage funds available, bond funds, didn't have those available to do that work. This project builds, takes two projects from the Stormwater, the master plan that we all, that we prepared a year or two ago, and starts at the downstream end. Both projects, project areas started at FM 2004. And the basis of the 1.2 million dollar work is complete. And through, through contractor underruns and an additional, we were able to engineer the project under the contract amount. There's additional funds available still. The, the construction of the project began in April of last year and constructed what we call the West Ditch and the East Ditch. The West Ditch runs from FM 2004, basically from the water tower to Moore Street. It's a little over 1,600 linear feet, eight feet wide at the bottom. And the important thing was that the side slopes were graded, so it's much more maintainable now. In areas, the ditch was cut up to a foot from where it was. And the East Ditch, what we're calling the East Ditch, is just north of the Audubon Woods area. And that construction, once they're done with the West Ditch, they started that in roughly June and just completed it in December. That was just under 4,400 linear feet, so pretty close to a mile. And again, it started at FM 2004. It ran all the way up to Mayhem Street, but it kind of weaves through, kind of around the school, then around the park. That was also eight feet wide. Cuts along that ditch, especially in front of the school, were up to like two and a half feet. So, water is able to move through there much easier now. And we'll note that there is a likelihood that you'll see standing water in there, a very, a very thin layer of it, just because the slopes from structure to structure were essentially zero, so there's no pitch. So, you will, there will be standing water there occasionally. The sun should bake it off, though. So, in total, 6,000, 1,400 linear feet of concrete line ditch was constructed. As I said, it was eight feet wide at the base, so you just get steer down there and clean it out as necessary. And roughly 3,300 square yards of slope paving were completed. And those were in areas where, where the slopes got steeper. And if they got too steep and they couldn't put a mower on them, they just put concrete on it to help with maintenance.
Do you want to get into, oh, say that to the other item, the next item?
Yes, sir, I'll, yeah.
I guess any questions or comments on?
You said we cut it by 430 last year because we didn't have that funds? And it's only going to.
Yes, there were sections of the project that were removed. So, we kept the downstream areas in the project and clipped off some upstream project areas to get it, to get it within the funds that were available.
And Matt, the original contract price came in at 1.6 billion. And then, we had engineering on top of that, so we had to reduce it.
At 1.2.
I was just surprised the 433 turned into now we only need to add additional 424 to it, but.
Well, we're not doing everything.
Right.
We had, we left a section off, there would be more.
Any other questions? All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving right along to item F. Discuss and consider approval of change order number two to the Stormwater Master Plan Phase One and Two Drainage Projects.
Council, the reason you see change order on here is because we changed order the project down. It is still the same project. It is technically not 100% closed out. So, we will change order again if, if approved. This is a little bit of a unique situation. One, it's not completely closed out, but, but two, we're able to utilize the same contractor. The procurement laws, we're not allowed to increase the original contract cost by 25%. With it being reduced, it was reduced by 25.5%, which is fine because it's with the, the contractor's permission. But, this does not have to go out, back out for bid. You gain, just by not doing that, you gain 20,000 or 40,000 dollars by staying with the same contractor. The, the cost amounts or unit costs were vetted through Jared. Nothing, nothing raised alarms. There were some increases, a little bit in concrete, stuff like that, which we expected to see, but nothing, nothing alarming from the two. The two, the two parts, I'm sorry, the three components removed from the original project, the West Ditch improvement south of Moore. So, we only took the concrete lining up to Moore. We did not go south to the southernmost retention pond of Audubon Woods, too. Improved pass-through culverts on North Mayhem and Audubon Woods Drive, and the pass-through culverts at North, North and South Yopon. I think it's actually known as East, East Yopon, that curve there. But, traditionally, historically, water holds there very bad. So, our, our target for this project is to add back into the contract the pass-through culverts at North Mayhem and Audubon Woods Drive, and also the pass-through culvert at North Mayhem, I'm sorry, North and South Yopon. And we believe that will be the most impactful and get us the most bang for the buck. The only reason we exclude Moore is probably 400 feet. That is a short section of ditch that takes on just a fraction of the water that the remainder of the ditch is due. And I would feel comfortable leaving that out if I could include these other two. And I think it would take a huge bite and make this project that much more efficient, matter of fact.
Questions?
Just had a question for if, you know, it gets approved under the resolution, but we're going to sign off on the third whereas. But, it still lists the sidewalk project. Says the amendment would allow for the completion of a sidewalk project using the remaining sidewalk bond, bond of 131.
Oh, I can change it. I didn't create that resolution.
Yeah. Just want to make sure we, it doesn't turn into an issue down the road, that it says drainage because it's bond money.
Of course, using the remaining bond funds, we added the 10% contingency in this. This will be a little bit less because Strand is going to require their estimate maybe 5,000 more dollars of engineering services. That's in that 10%. I did not add that on top of the contract price. I felt that that, we were okay and could absorb that.
Okay, any further questions or motions?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-R-.
That's something.
No?
Just a change order.
It's a change order.
Change order?
Yes, it's, it'll be this on the chair.
Should be a change.
We'll do the resolution, it'll be the next item.
Okay.
The approved change order number two to the Stormwater Master.
Okay, I make a motion approving change order two to the Stormwater Master Plan Phase One and Two Drainage Projects.
Council, Councilman Escalante has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilmember Yarborough. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item G, discuss and consider approving Resolution 23R, 23-R-74, amending FY 23 Transportation Budget Fund, Fund Budget to complete a drainage project using the remaining bond funds and transportation fund balance.
It's corrected.
What?
I fixed it. What Rory had to fix, I fixed it. So, it's up there now. We can see the resolution.
Okay, any discussion or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-R-74, amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 Transportation Fund Budget to complete a drainage project using the remaining, drainage bond allocation of 131,015 dollars as well as an amount not to exceed 293,396 dollars of transportation fund balance for a total project cost not to exceed 424,411 dollars.
Okay, let the record reflect that Councilmember Escalante made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilmember Yarborough. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect that the motion is carried. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
Be nice to us, man.
Okay, moving on to item I. Discuss.
H.
H. Yep, that's you. Yeah, I missed it.
Oh, I see.
That's why.
So, last year, in fiscal year '22, we budgeted a total amount of, I think it was 120,000 within CCPD's budget to buy two vehicles for the police department. Due to supply issues, those vehicles weren't ready for delivery at the end of the budget year. So, they, it wasn't spent in fiscal year '22. That being said, they're ready to be purchased now. But, we didn't know when they would be ready, when the budget was prepared for this current fiscal year. And I didn't want to put them in again and then take them out again. So, I notified Eric and the chief that we would come back to CCPD when we were notified that the vehicles would be ready. So, they are ready. So, I prepared a budget reg, bud, budget amendment on a resolution which CCPD has approved at their board meeting to allow that purchase that was supposed to be taken last year to be taken, made this year.
Okay.
Any questions or comments or motions?
Are these replacing vehicles or just adding to what we currently have? Just curious.
That's a question for him.
That's a question.
There's going to be a replacement vehicle.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, Lauren?
I just wanted to point out that the chief has been doing a great job trying to get these cars, and we have approved them several times with CCPD. We, we do buy, this is the, that they're space, vehicle that we've gotten two for CCPD. So, typically, the police CCPD does usually buy vehicles.
And chief, files the feedback on the Tahos compared to, I remember, the, the Fords, so.
Well, I haven't heard any grumbling. Taha's are notorious for grumbling, so, you like them?
Yes, I'm excited to get the new one.
Good deal. Just another curious, what do we do with the old ones? Do we get, are you able to?
Sell them.
You are able to sell them and?
And then, we get the money back over at CCPD since we bought them in the first place. Just a reminder.
We sent three vehicles to auction last year.
The Explorers, the front wheel drives, are they, they?
I can't let you get rid of those.
Okay. Yeah, those, those are not, never have been acceptable for police vehicles.
And there are maintenance tonight, too.
Yes.
Now, usually, it takes about 15, 16 hundred dollars to replace a water pump on one of the four floors. I had one done on the Tahoe for about 350 bucks, so.
And the maintenance comes up, yep.
I still like the Crown Vixor. Take me all the way back to Plymouth Furious.
I wish we could get them.
I'm real good at this because this is a topic I have, we, we've worked really hard to make sure that our officers have. good vehicles that work properly and we don't let our fleet get turned down and nasty.
No, they said CCPD's already approved this, Lauren.
And we do have a lot of discussion about this. We don't make these sub decisions.
So as with our regular.
And we do it so y'all don't have to, to be approved by council after CCPD is approved.
So any other questions or any motions?
Make a motion to approve resolution 23-R-76, amending the fiscal year '23 budget to approve transfer from CCPD to the general fund for the purchase of police department vehicles.
Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilmember Fountain. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Strawn, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, motion carries. Onion must leave.
Now go get him through somebody else's desk.
Okay, discuss and consider adopting ordinance 23-504, amending Chapter 15, Article 2, Section 27 of the City of Ridgewood Code of Ordinances for the purpose of amending membership guidelines of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Counsel, this was created at the request of Councilman Fountain. So I just presented his request. I mean, as it is now, I can't fill the Planning and Zoning Commission because the only people that want to be on it currently help out in other forms of city. And the current restriction is that you can't be involved in any other form of government. So that's no volunteer firefighters, no reserve police officers, any of my other committees.
And ironically, that leaves y'all filling that role.
Right. And so because I can't fill it, council access that and.
I think that's, when preparing for the meeting, that was my only concern seeing this is council in the future, once we finally can staff that zoning commission itself, I think there should be a limit to no more elected officials on both.
Well, council wouldn't be able to serve on both. That's, that's a rule for council.
Yeah.
As a council member, you cannot serve on a board or committee.
I think you should just clarify the definition of city position, like elected or non-elected or.
But that's, that's already lined out in council member descriptions that you can't serve on any other boards and commissions. But in the ordinance, it reads, if we can't fill the board, it is filled by council.
So if I was on zoning.
So if I have it filled, you can't fill a spot on it.
Okay, so take the council member person off, but if I'm wanting to be on the newly formed zoning commission, can I be appointed to CCPD? Can I be, will you still be appointed to just council that is?
Yep, everything but.
Right, everybody but council. But that, that's because that's already a guideline to be a council member is that you can't serve on any other boards, just as a council member can't be on CCPD. It would then be the same. That's not explicitly notated in CCPD.
And we discussed this when we had the charter review. I mean, that's what we brought it to him because.
Yeah, it was a request of charter review, but it's enacted by ordinance, so they can't change that.
It was kind of silly that the volunteers within the city who volunteer for everything can't serve on that one specific board. And council can't serve on any of our volunteer boards. And then ironically, y'all are the entire board for planning and zoning. So it doesn't make any sense. It's counterintuitive. And we're going to have rules that council can't be on boards and all that. It should be, like make all the boards volunteer boards.
As a, as a planning and zoning, that one's a little more in-depth as far as trying to look out for what's best for the whole city rather than just, and having the same group of people on all the committees. Because right now CCPD, Keep Ridgewood Beautiful, Charter Review, all those things have the same.
Right.
Four or five people. Just if you have the same.
I'd like to point out that everyone in the city is afforded the same opportunity to serve on those boards and commissions. That you have the same group of volunteers.
But at the same time, planning and zoning is a recommending body. They do not make change, just like a replat. The planning and zoning would review the replat and recommend it to council to finalize.
Kind of like CCPD and KRB and whatever they're bringing us.
Just like, that's why I, why when we have P and Z meetings, we double do it when it goes to council. It's because we have to have P and Z approve it. We have to have council approve it. So anything, the replat comes before P and Z and they want to approve it, but then it gets to council. Council can still decide, we don't want that. They're a recommending body. They do not make change.
What do other cities do?
They fill their boards with volunteers. We only have that caveat in there because we.
It's very hard.
It is. I mean, a lot of.
That's what I was questioning because I thought most of them had the same.
Clue has to cancel meetings many times because their P and Z meetings don't have quorums.
And then that means that people are put behind on schedule for, you know, housing, for any kind of project if they can't be filled by the volunteers.
Right, which is why we have a, we can't fill it. It's because we don't have anybody that will show up to meetings that can fill it. The people that want to do it that can show up to meetings are on other boards and already come to meetings.
Right.
So that's why we need to remove this if we want to be able to ever fill that board.
We're definitely not unique in this position. Are we going to leave it at six?
The whole requirement will stay the same, other than removing the restriction of being on another.
Yeah, I'm good as long as.
But if you allow this and then you have these six members and you can't catch quorum for that, like over and over and over again.
Then it'll go back to council. The rule is still in there that if we can't fill the board, council serves. That doesn't mean we're not removing that.
You can fill it, but if you're constantly losing quorum. What I mean is if you have six.
Well, then it'll go back to council. As soon as I can't fill it, as soon as it becomes unfilled, as soon as the board is lacking people, it goes back to council serving.
Okay, so I mean, I'm just talking about quorum. So say you only get three people show up or two people, or you know.
Then it reverts to council serving.
Immediately, so that we can just step in? Because all, all I'm thinking about is the future of the people. So you have residents who can't build their house because they're waiting on combining a lots. Or, you know, you have a gas station that wants to go up, they can't because you can't get planning and zoning to actually show up for quorum. I mean.
I understand, but we don't know unless we do it.
I think what she's saying, and I actually agree with what she's saying is, you know, like say KRB or someone, they can't fill their quorum. It gets put off to the next meeting.
Right, but we're not not filling quorum because we have people that don't show up. We're not filling quorum because we don't have people. Well, like CCPD meeting, CCPD, we didn't have people. We, we wouldn't miss one person, we couldn't have quorum.
But if we approve it and we approve the people, if we approve this, this change and we bring the people in there and say, six months from now, you can't have a meeting because there's not enough people in the meeting, not enough quorum. That's where they're going with.
It'll revert back to council serving as planning.
I just feel like.
Will it cover that it's, it's not saying that your, your, your committee's not, not functional anymore. It's saying that, okay, you've got a meeting and say, two people showed up instead of six at that meeting. So do you put it off to the next month? Or does it come back to the council as far as making the decision the next council meeting? I think that's what.
That's my, I mean, I understand. That's my concern. Because we don't have quorum at the next council, then you can go ahead without any feedback from the planning and zoning commission that did not meet.
That's my concern because if you, because if you're holding up the city, like CCPD, if they don't meet, it's not the end of the world. You wait till the next, if, if, and KRB doesn't meet, it's not the end of the world. You wait till the next meeting. If planning and zoning doesn't meet, then you're putting someone behind schedule, you know, and, and, and that's my concern in it.
I understand.
Is that until we know for sure. Well, but we just had last meeting, people saying.
I do have people that want to serve.
Just last meeting, we had people saying, we can't get enough volunteers, we can't get enough volunteers. And then this meeting, we're saying, hey, let's open it up to volunteers.
I believe that those people that the last meeting was meeting and they were talking about you finding.
Let me let Josh ask his question real quick.
Just real quick, what's the reason for the change? Is council not, not doing their job?
Residents are asking to be able to serve. And I have a couple of applications that I've just been holding on to, but I can't get to six. I have maybe three that qualify currently.
Just don't know any other city that has multiple the same, same people serving on, on the same.
Well, they're much larger cities that have more people that want to have.
It doesn't matter what other city does. This is Ridgewood. I don't care what another city does.
I mean, I, I get it. I understand.
Thing is, you know, and the whole idea on this is there are multiple people that want to serve. Ultimately, the, the city council's going to have the final say so on whether anything is changed, whether at all.
So it's explicitly in here. It says if there's a repeated lack of quorum or short of the volunteers, council may serve as the planning commissioner. So if it gets to that, council will serve.
I do understand. I just hate to put people behind unless we know for sure that those positions can be filled and will be consistently filled.
All of my boards are full right now.
I don't think.
I just tell whenever that happens, you bring it.
Council's doing a great job. They, they approved any kind of land combinations and they're always here.
Keep things on schedule.
There's a few times that council doesn't give one, so.
I don't think anybody has a question of them not doing a good job. If, if the matter is concerning volunteers who want to serve on this board but can't currently because they serve on other boards.
It's a matter.
I mean, if a firefighter wants to serve, he can't serve.
It's a matter of, it's a matter of the citizens wanting to serve on something that affects them.
So can I?
Board, yes, ma'am.
So can I, so what I'm picking up, not that any of this is my business, but if, if you call the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, say next Monday night, and there wasn't a quorum, could council then at that, at that council meeting?
I would think that they could deem it a repeated lack of quorum. If it's, if I can't get anybody to meet.
Do that month by month. I mean, that's what, once we go to form that committee, I think those are kind of details.
We couldn't even meet until I get six people.
Right. If there's, especially if something that is a replat that council's going to have to approve anyways, and they missed their meeting that was supposed to be an hour ahead of ours, we could still take action.
And because I'm bound by, on replats specifically, I'm bound by a 30-day notice. Like I'm required to give the resident 30 days to bring this before board. So if I can't get a quorum, then yes, council by this ordinance will serve and, and do the job.
I think that's what you're saying.
Immediately. And I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be something where it's cut off from month to month to month.
Well, if you go to our, our ordinances regarding replats, it says that I'm legally required to give them or answer within 30 days.
That's why I was worried because then it puts us over and then it puts us in jeopardy because we can't get quorum from whoever. So that's why I just want to make sure it's, it's, it's an immediate, council can step in and say, okay, well, let's go ahead and do this if they can't catch quorum.
And if, if you go back in history here, when you, when you talk about, or talk about volunteering in multiple areas within the city, this city, it's had a history of that. I mean, council members have worked, or firefighters have been on council. Firefighters have been on committees. Firefighters and police officers have been on KRB. I mean, it's, it's one big thing. You know, it's a small town and volunteerism today is not what it was back in the 70s and the 80s. And it's, it's, it's really, it's sad to see that, but that's, that's the way the town is. And it, I see the point as far as making sure that we have, you know, it's, it's a checks and balance type system with the planning and zoning. And letting citizens have an addition, have a little bit of additional say when it comes to planning and zoning. And they could recommend, they don't make the rules. So council still has ultimate say at the end.
Okay, and here it says, I have, it says, once we receive a preliminary replat, the planning and zoning has six, shall render a decision within 60 days. So should the P and Z committee not reach quorum, then yes, we'll call a meeting, probably our next council meeting, to have y'all serve as P and Z.
I think that was, I mean, and I agree with that.
It's in here. I'm trying to, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, that's the main concern for me is I just don't want.
So it's not in this ordinance, but there is a catch for those sort of things.
As long as council can act immediately as needed.
And it's not like we have to dissolve the, you know, I don't want to have to go through that whole.
No, I get it. We don't know if we're going to have that issue until we have that, you know what I mean?
Right.
I mean.
Well, but you know.
Some residents, the only time they ever interact with the city is when they have to, because they have to get.
So that's here. So I have 60 days from the filing date to get a decision.
Because our master plan is already set out.
Right.
So there's not a lot of opportunities for citizens to really have say so in how our city develops, building forward. But having the opportunity to serve on millions then does give them that opportunity. It's something that every, there are volunteers who have interests that aren't always, they're not going to serve on everything, but they may find something that is their thing.
And I mean, I have three applications. I just don't have six.
Well, we've opened it up so many times. I was going to say, we've opened it up so many times, we only get three.
Because there's not that many people that want to do it that qualify. There's lots of people that want to do it. I have more than six that want to do it. They just can't.
Because they're on other.
Because they're on other boards. Well, even charter review, if they're on charter review, they can't do it. So my charter review people are the few of them, well, they were, ones that hadn't served on other things.
Well, and they're just for a solid year, right?
Well, it's, it's a year term.
A year term, so they would, they wouldn't be able to, right.
All right. I would, I would just recommend, just to make sure there's no ambiguity, like confusion. I know you say it's the city council, the, the council person's guideline says you can't serve. But let's say we're not here in five years and there's new council, new people, and they pull up this ordinance and it just says, shall serve without compensation and that's it. But if it says, if you keep what's on there out and shall not hold any other elected position in the city government, that'll help clear a lot of confusion.
Even if council tries to pull that out of their own requirements, that would.
I mean, that comes back into the self appointment. Well, but that comes into self appointment. You wouldn't serve on planning and zoning because you appoint planning.
That's my problem. I do not want council to serve on planning. Well, no, because it says if there is no quorum, then council automatically steps in.
Because that's in the ordinance that says, should there be lack of quorum, the whole council serves, not just you. You don't step in on that one spot that's empty. That, the board that I have established would no longer be, and then y'all would take over as a whole board. It would be self appointment if a council member became a planning and zoning member, just like if they were on CCPD, you can't serve. It's this dual, dual incompatibility, which we just did a whole.
I mean, I know it's incompatible in, in the requirement, so what's wrong with putting it on the ordinance, just to reemphasize the point?
It's just doubled to state law.
I mean, you're just, it's, it's not wrong. It's still.
It's not. It's just.
It just helps clear any confusion down the road.
Part of our charter review that we, or the, my legal review that I did of our whole ordinances, one of their big recommendations is that we are double, we double up on state law when we don't need to. And that can cause confusion later down the road.
So is, when was this brought in? Like, when did this become, we don't have any, I was going to say, we don't, we just don't have any background as to why this was initially put into place. Was it initially put into place because there was a problem?
Oh, I don't know. It was created with the original planning and zoning.
I think the original creation, the original charter.
I was going to say, I think it was changed back in 2013, right? So I was just curious if there was a reason why we added it, or I mean, not created, but amended and.
The original charter was, the idea was that there would be no.
Is that the right one I'm thinking of?
An abundant of launches.
Yeah. And I think what they were trying to say in that is that you would have a checks and balance and there would be no room for, what's the word I'm looking for?
For someone to be like on one committee and have a special interest and then take it to the planning and zoning committee also and then take it to the CCPD. Well, so that's the concern. So if you have someone who wants to set, I mean, I'm just like throwing it out there, but has, wants to set up a park or something like this, well, then they could be also be on the planning and zoning committee and then they could say, okay, well, we're going to do this part. And then like, you know, so to separate it, to make it different.
But that's why it ultimately has to come to the council, you know, and that's why.
These volunteer boards are made up of residents.
Right. You don't have enough residents to do that.
The reason is so that the residents can make changes to the city and improve on their city.
Yeah, and it looks like the update was done from 1968.
I must be thinking of a different one.
Yeah, well, I mean, no, this was amended, last amended in 2019.
Okay.
But it was amended from the original ordinance created in 1968.
So what was it in 2019? What did they amend it then?
It doesn't really, it's not very clear. It just amends, it just says.
That's when we updated everything.
Amending.
That's what I was thinking, is that it was changed, it might have been 2019, that it was changed to that.
It was in 19, amending the membership, but it doesn't tell me what it went from.
Yeah.
No, we didn't change it in the charter unless we just did a grammatical change.
No, it was a, it's not charter. It's just an ordinance. It was changed in, so I think that's when it was changed.
They don't really highlight it in red like I do to show the change.
I was just wondering.
I can pull, I can, I'd have to go pull a hard copy of the original ordinance from 1968. This was just brought up.
Right.
In general in charter and I had to advise them they couldn't change that and then.
Yeah. Can we, can we do a little bit of research just to see if we have enough people, to see if we can actually do something like this before we do it? Because I'd hate to jump in and then find that we can't. Can we make a motion maybe to bring it next month and just do a little bit of research and find out?
Yes, we can.
If there was a reason why this was added or when it was added?
Do we just either need a motion to approve or a motion to table?
Yeah, we just need a motion, need a motion to, to table, I guess.
Well, if somebody wants to motion to approve it, they can.
Right, if they want to prove it, yes. So do we have any motions?
I would like to make a motion to table it till next month when we can get some more information.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Strawn, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Nay.
Okay, let the record reflect it. Motion does carry with one nay from Councilmember Fountain. Okay, so we will revisit this on the, on next month's agenda. Fout. Okay, so we will revisit this on the, on next month's agenda, after a little research. All right. Item J, we don't have anything there, so let's go to capital improvement projects update. You again.
All right, council, a little bit has changed since last time. North Water Plant, we're currently at a standstill till spring of two, twenty twenty-three, till we can get a electrical switchgear on site and continue work there. Of course, Stormwater Master Plan, Phase One and Two will continue. I did, uh, I did speak to Mike Murphy with Matula Matula today. He actually called me from the Grand Canyon, so I appreciate it. He said they can probably start as early as next week. And we'll get a better timeline after that. As far as the ARPA grant goes, a South Water Plant Booster Pumping Station. So everything, I understand, everything is good to go. The Geotechnical Engineering, Teracon, reported back to Strand, everything's looking, looking good. We have a proposed schedule, is had on February twenty-third. They advertise March first and eighth. Bid opening March twenty-third, and award on April tenth meeting for the ARPA. Sidewalk improvements, move forward with that. I don't imagine it's gonna be long before we start on that as well. And the MIT mod, the CDBG, application material provided the grant works, and sending on to the, to the GLO as of January, January ninth, so we're waiting to hear back from that. That's current where we stay.
But I had a, I had a HOA meeting with Oakwood Shores, and then a lot of residents were asking about the North Water Plant, so I'm just gonna report to them, spring twenty twenty-three, wait, I told them they're waiting on our electronic components on back order. You know, once we get that, thinking summertime, it's live.
Yeah, our, our date, our tentative date right now is August of twenty twenty-three for completion.
Okay.
Uh, we believe we'll get crucial, or components, switchgear, and the generator is really what we're waiting for on the North Water Plant. So yeah, I appreciate it, Rory.
And, and then they were asking about the, the phase two of the roads. I remember, I saw the mayor had signed the interlocal agreement.
Yes.
Any word on when they might start on that?
I apologize. I was gonna jump in right when you did, to say, but right, as of right now, the, the second phase, everything was submitted at one time. They requested I do that, just saying caps like that. They sent the second part back to me for signature. They went to the commissioner's court this evening. A work order will be generated as long as they approve, and they should approve. I just don't know at this point in time when the county will be back out in Oakwood Shores. I know it's their intention to finish in this fiscal year, but it is possible that they might wait until the summer months, being May, June, or July, to get past the spring rains, and then finish up then. But hopefully everything will go down sooner rather than later.
Done. All right. Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, city manager's report.
Mayor, council, I've got nothing new to report since Friday. The only addition I would like to add on to that is, uh, that made mention of our code enforcement officer being out for a female medical emergency. He will be back tomorrow, and we're looking forward to having him back. That's all I got.
All right. Any questions for Eric? Okay. Uh, councilmember comments and reports.
Yeah, so, uh, went to attend the KRB meeting last week, and we couldn't, couldn't have a quorum. So I'm glad to see all the volunteers getting on KRB this month. So that'll, that'll help the KRB committee out. Appreciate that. And then, uh, we had the Vow Twenty-Two Veterans Hike Saturday. I saw lots of people from Richwood out there supporting that, and it was a real good event. And if y'all didn't get to go to it, or don't know about it, or whatever, just check out vowtwentytwo.org. It's a nonprofit here in, in the Bezora County, service Bezora County. And thank you, mayor, for making that day the, of the walk official Vow Twenty-Two Day here in Richwood.
It's my pleasure and privilege.
That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Strong.
Oh, I echo that one. He stole it from me. I was gonna say the same. Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, it was a great turnout. And even though it was so cold that morning, oh my gosh, it was still a huge turnout, and it was really great. And I appreciate that.
All right. Councilmember Yarborough.
Thanks to Trish and the rest of the staff for the audit. Good to hear, you know, no findings, and very little to mention at all from that. So Cliff, for all the projects and keeping us on track, okay? Appreciate that. And the rest of the staff for everything that they do.
Councilmember Escalante.
Um, I just wanted to comment, the new sign looks great out there. I think it's gonna attract and, and let people know when we're having council meetings, so we can see some more community involvement. I would recommend maybe one of the signs and banners we, we put up there is volunteers needed, inquire within, something, free bottles of water, or something to, to get people in. But no, I think that's great that we have that sign out there to, to really let, and people know what's going on and inform them. But I think putting the volunteers needed or wanted something up there would definitely help get more people involved in the community in our little town of Richwood. So that's all I have.
All right. Councilmember Fout.
Not too much this week, just thanks to all the volunteers out there that are joining up on the KRB. I definitely saw that. If y'all are not following their Facebook page, make sure you follow it and share out. They've got the Easter egg up, I think is the next thing event coming up. So that's always a big, big turnout. And, um, all right, pretty good.
All right. And I guess we'll move on to the mayor's report.
You got ten seconds.
Yes.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't know who this would go to or anything like that. First of all, man junior guy that saw y'all at the outside the other night, stupid amazing job. Police Department blocking off the roads, all that. One problem I did see with it, and I wanted to take my Jeep hook up to this individual's car and drag it the hell out of the way. It pissed me off that bad. I understand there's certain individuals that like the video and get up personal and close, and all that stuff. But what I saw was, the Richwood fire truck almost got blocked out by him. They had to go around the corner to hook up and run, what is it, five inches, I think y'all run? To run their five inches around where the house was. Well, one of the responding neighbor fire departments allowed this individual to bring his car in on that road, and he just parked it right on the road, did not get off in the ditch, not the grass, not the side, anything else. And I've got a picture of it somewhere I took, but literally just stopped in the road, got out, the Richwood fire truck made that turn, laid their five inch hose down, and I literally counted seven responding emergency vehicles, whether it be fire trucks, EMS, and police cars, that could not reach the scene at that point, because his car was literally parked right in that road. I don't know who that would go to, or who has to deal with that, or anything like that, but especially these guys wearing all their gear. And I know I counted at least a dozen of them having to walk down that road. Now, I believe it was two blocks in, if I'm correct. And all their gear and everything after, what are they gonna go deal with? Now they've gotta walk two blocks in to deal with that.
Is that the Four Oaks Fire, or the Yaphom Fire?
Four Oaks.
Yeah, Four Oaks, yes. And, I mean, that's just ridiculous. I think in a situation like that, I understand they have the right to, you know, the media and all that, bulky, and that's one thing. But when they park their vehicles in a place where it causes a hindrance to these first responders getting to where they need to be at, I mean, I don't know what the city can do about that, whether it's the fire department, the police department, the council, whatever. That, I mean, literally, I wanted to hook the windshield on my Jeep to his car and just drag it straight back.
Block the roadway, call the police department. They'll move it, and they can tie it up.
Well, a lot of them want to, some of those people want our police department to get involved in that, and then he heckle and antagonize. And I went, I was gonna talk about that fire too, if y'all have mine. I do believe that our fire department had that fire out before pizza could be delivered. They, they got it, they got fast, they beat Lake Jackson into, Lake Jackson wasn't that happy about that one, but I'm just gonna say, our fire department beat Lake Jackson into one of their fires, because we, we have such a great department. They put up with so much, a lot of emotional dumping from these people who are in, in tragedy, and they do a great job in their work years.
I literally, I was driving past, like when it first started, before the first cop car was buried, I was driving past and I stopped. And when I saw that happen, but until I saw them putting water on the fire, it was fourteen minutes. That was Richwood dropping a hose, I would have to say probably three to four hundred yards at least, somewhere in that area. That was the state troopers, the sheriff's department, Richwood Police Department, Clue EMS, all of them. Like, it was an amazing job, but it could have been better had certain vehicles not stopped these guys from doing their job, so.
Well, bottom line is, yes, anyone from the press, or anyone that says they're from the press, or there to take pictures, or whatever, yeah, they, they have the right to do that, but they don't have the right to limit access.
That, that was my issue.
Of equi, lack, access of the equipment. And if their vehicles are blocking vehicles coming in, if they're, you know, access of the firefighters, or EMS, or anyone like that, make a phone call, get an officer down there, get a wrecker down there, move it. It's not, it's, it's, it's not stepping on anyone's First Amendment rights. What it's doing is trying to make sure that equipment can get there to the personnel, and that personnel are safe and have an adequate water supply, have adequate EMS coverage, and have adequate backup. Again, folks that wanna take pictures and everything, that's great, if that's what they wanna do. If it's press, that's great. But the fire chief, or whoever the incident commander is, has the right to establish a zone for the press, a safe zone for them, and a staging area for them. So if the chief or whoever the IC is on, on the call, they decide that they wanna back a hundred yards, that's, that's their call. Because they may not, you know, number one, they can't get equipment in or personnel in. Number two, if they're blocking the road however, and they're limiting access to necess, or necessary equipment and essentials, then if they don't move it, if somebody can't tell them to move it, or they don't wanna move it, then I've, I've seen that actually happen before with a local newspaper getting his car towed. And, uh, a long time ago.
With them walking up there. I mean, if he wants to walk up there and roast marshmallows, I mean, whatever. But I watched two ladder trucks, a tractor truck, and ambulance, and multiple cars get stopped.
That's, that's, that's a big problem. I understand that well, because I've been in that same situation in fires.
I'm so proud of our guys.
Okay, well, moving on to the mayor's report. One of the things that I did wanna mention tonight, which y'all did, was our fire department has been very busy. Between them, Lake Jackson, Agleton, and Clue, they've been running their tails off left and right. A lot more calls than what we used to have when, when I was in the department. But, and I'm very proud of the response. I'm very proud of, I don't go to the seat and watch it, but I listen to it on the radio, and I can tell you that everything's done, just like it's supposed to be. And they're well-trained, and they do an excellent job. Same thing with our police officers. I have been listening to them on their jobs, and it's, it's amazing the things that goes on in a little town like this. And back in years ago, you wouldn't think that you'd need two officers in Richwood, but hey, you do. Two officers at night and two officers in the day. It, it gets kinda crazy. I'd also like to thank all the folks that have stood, stood up and volunteered to get on the various boards. William, congratulations for BWA. I wanna thank all the, congratulate all the folks that are on the different boards that did stand up and come in. And I do appreciate all the hard work that the staff and the city workers have been doing. Tonight, just as we saw, they're taking what we've got, and they're not just going with tunnel vision, they're, they're working at multiple points, and trying to get the job done, chip away at all the things that we haven't been able to afford over the years. And they're doing a great job at it. Secondly, I received a letter in the mail today, actually, three letters, from a teacher at Brazos Wood. Get it out. And it involves students' concerns with some of the things that are, that are going on in, in the government, and in the, the teacher is Brendan Griffith, a US government teacher at Brazos Wood High School. And they, she's asked some of her students to write some of the elected officials, let them know kinda where they, some of their concerns, and so that the elected official could actually answer back. And I fully plan to it. One of them has to do with the world's climate change. I'm not a, I'm not an expert on it, but I have spent a few, few years with environmental, so I will get, definitely get back with, with her. And the other one has to do with, about firearm safety. And being worried about, you know, what's to come, and, and, and who actually happens to have, you know, is there any way that we can keep the, the guns in the right hands and not in the wrong hands, and keep them out of the wrong hands. So I look forward to answering those. I'm very proud that they, they thought enough of the city to send us the letter, and, and I will do my best to give them the best answer that I can. Also, coming up on the twenty-third, we have the, we have Eric's evaluation. I'm going to email out some paperwork for, for y'all to fill out and bring back with you when you get to the, get to the meeting. And then we will work on that and do his evaluation. I was also, I didn't get to go to the, to the Vow Twenty-Two activity, but I tell you, a walk, but I tell you what, my son and my daughter-in-law did, and they, they worked real hard. I think Steven did, walked the whole thing, walked back, and, or walked the whole thing. And they said it was one of the best turnouts that they've had. I support this. I think it's a great organization. I think they do great things, and it was my privilege to, to honor them with the eleventh being the Vow Twenty-Two Day here in Richwood. Thank goodness we've got people out there that'll do that. We have a lot of people doing a lot of different things voluntarily. And sometimes, just like we said tonight, sometimes it, it looks like there's not a lot of, lot out there. But in a small town like this, we definitely, we definitely need to use the resources that we have. So, all right, that's about it. So future agenda items, I think we already know the, the discussion on the Planning and Zoning Commission. That'll be for the next regular council meeting. Anything else?
Next regular council meeting is gonna be during spring break, so can we postpone that to the following week?
Yeah, didn't we respond to that? Did we?
Yeah, I had no problem.
As far as we could tell, we were only gonna miss one. We were, we were still.
Oh, have fun with me next month, then.
So, okay.
I saw on there, there was also on the, said city council meeting on the twenty-third of March.
Eric Seva, any review there?
That's February, February.
February.
At what time?
Six.
Six.
Yeah, y'all chose it last month.
Yeah, y'all chose it last month.
Okay, anything else? Well, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at eight oh four. Everybody be safe going home. And thank you for coming.